We're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the San Rafael City Council Meeting of Monday, August 17th, 2020. Start with closed session, of which there was none. And this evening, a slight change in the order of the agenda because of the possibility of a blackout. We're going to move item 5A to the top of the agenda, and we'll continue after 5A with the agenda you have before you. If we're interrupted by a blackout, and there is that possibility, but if we're interrupted, then the remaining items will be taken up at the next regular meeting. So might tune in for that if you're interested in some of the remaining items. With that, I'll ask for the roll call. City Clerk.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember McCullough is present. And Mayor Phillips.
Present, thank you very much. And with that, as I mentioned a moment ago, we're going to move directly to other agenda items, 5A, Police Use of Force Policy. And I believe the city manager is going to open with comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kick us off on this particular item and introduce Chief of Police, Diana Bishop, who's going to walk through the suggested revisions to the use of force policy. And then Police Lieutenant Roy Leon is going to talk a little bit about police training that takes place in San Rafael. And Lorenzo Jones is going to finish this out and complete our presentation, as Lorenzo's been the facilitator of the task force on this topic, and will add his perspective as well. I just wanted to start because I wanted to let you know that those three people would be talking, but mostly because I wanted to thank the mayor and council for setting up this process. The entire police policy manual is over 700 pages long, but it was a great opportunity to take a deep dive into the use of force section, which is Section 300, and make significant updates. The chief is also, has also added a preface to the entire overall policy manual, and I know she's going to talk about that in her remarks. So without anything further, I'll turn it over to Chief of Police Diana Bishop.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening, everyone, and anyone who may be listening in. Just wanted to say that the process that we went through with the community group to look at this policy and just our department in general was, to me, a pleasant surprise. I have always known what we do and why we do it, and it's very apparent to the folks who work here. But if other people don't know about it, then it's not as legitimate as it could be. So with that said, we were very willing and open to look at this policy in particular to see if we could do better. But I just want to start at the beginning to say that I think we are a very, very talented and professional police department, and do not have any issue with improper use of force. But it's a great topic to talk about, and I think that the final product that you all have seen will be a very bellwether for other departments to look at. I think it's fantastic. And thank you, Lorenzo, for your assistance. You're a rock star, as far as I'm concerned. So with that, as Jim said, our manual is like 700 pages long, and we actually are responsible for reading all of those pages when they're updated. And usually, it's very not significant updates, a word here, a word there. And there's a chief's preface that there's a placeholder for that in the in the manual, and I've never written one. I've seen the blank page every time I've gone on the thing. I'm like, oh, I don't, I'm not sure what I would say rather than just how we do business every day. But this was a moment in time to really write down who we are and what we do, and that we revere life, and that we are here to serve the public. And it just kind of, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it basically say we have a reverence for all human life. And that's our first profit premise every day. No police officer wants to use force in his or her daily interactions with folks, and certainly not deadly force. So it was very easy to write, and it's kind of the moment that we're in now of people are looking at us to say, you know, you law enforcement in this community and in this country mostly, we have concerns about your motivations and where your heart is. And this is showing where our heart is. So our heart is to do the right thing, and to train to do the right thing, and just know that we take these policies very seriously, and everyone is very, has to take them seriously, or they could not work here anymore. So we haven't had that happen. I don't plan on having that happen, but if it does, it will. So that's the preface. And getting to the actual policy. So the policy itself is probably when we started this, it was six pages long or seven pages. And in the process, Lexipol, which is a professional organization where we get our policies, went ahead and updated the policy that they were sending out to their clients. And what was neat about that is that a lot of the things that the task force spoke about and brought up, we had already written. So we were very far ahead, and I was like, whoa, I'm glad they put that in there. Why did they do that a month ago, where we wouldn't have to do it? But it was neat that we did it. So a lot of the new wording is from the task force and everything that was agreed upon that would be great for our department and our community. And then some of it was just legal language from a government code that they they put in to really reiterate where the basis of all these laws and rules come from. So I have like papers all over here, and I have my most important one, and I've lost it, but I found it. Okay, so this, we're not going to go over all 13 pages, because some of it is just set up and definitions. But I wanted to go over the things that everyone in the task force was wanting to know about, or wanting to have described better or added, because it wasn't there. So that's what I'm going to do now. And then, as Jim said, Lieutenant Leon will talk about training, which is something that was very important to the task force, and it's always been very important to our our department as well. But there was one line in here about training. So we're, that's changed. So we are addressing Campaign Zero and the Eight Can't Wait premises that they brought up in June. And the first one that I'm just going to talk about, I'm just going to go over the big nuggets in this, is the duty to intercede and report. So our policy before talked about, hey, if an officer sees another officer using what they believe is unnecessary or unreasonable force, they need to stop that behavior right when they see it, when they can do it. And then it said, you should, and they should report it to the supervisor. Well, I was surprised that it said should. So it was easy to say, no, you shall report it to the supervisor. But one of the things that the task force folks were concerned about is the way the wording was, they felt that if like a junior officer or someone with not a lot of experience would be in a, put in a bad position to report something a superior officer did. So we cleaned up the language to basically say, it doesn't matter who you are, what your rank is, what your position is in the department. If you see something that is not right, at the moment in time that you can safely do so, you shall stop that person from doing it. So that is your responsibility. So we cleaned up the language in that, and I think it made it very easy to understand for a layperson to read that that policy. And one other thing I was going to say about the policy is, we understand it, but some of it, we've known it for 30 years, but a person who can read it on our website would be like, I have no idea what they're talking about. So we cleaned it up. So at least one of, 13 of these 700 pages will be clear to the public. So it's a start, anyway. So we added people, it's a very difficult definition to talk about reasonable force. What is reasonable? And that was a big topic of conversation for the task force. And in the policy, there are, there's a section that talks about from the penal code, all the, all the things that go into reasonable, and it's like 16 or 18 things. So we put our own definition based on law in here right at the beginning, so the reader and the officer would know what reasonable force is. And I can read it, or you can, everyone has, I think, seen it, but I'll read it because it's important. An objective standard of force viewed from the perspective of a reasonable officer without benefit of 2020 hindsight, based on the totality of the circumstances known or perceived by the officer at that time. And then there's another, it just points to the policy that says what the determination of reasonableness would be based on the factors that were there at the time. So that was important for the task force, and that was easy to do, and I'm glad we made it more clear. I'm going in the order. So these aren't the order of importance to members of the group, but it's the order in which they are found in the policy. The next thing is de-escalation. So we, everything we do each day, we use de-escalation. We use our voice, our presence, our tactics of time, and maybe slowing things down to de-escalate a situation so we don't have to use force. It's what we do every day. But there was not a lot of about de-escalation written in the in the manual section. So we added a bunch of stuff in there, and then Lexipol added a bunch more. So it's a pretty robust, it's a pretty robust part, but it's basically how we do things each and every day. That's our goal, is to not use force, as I mentioned earlier. So de-escalation is really talked about in there, and Sergeant, excuse me, I just demoted you, Lieutenant Leon will talk about how we do that de-escalation training, in every type of training we do. Okay, the carotid control hold and chokehold. So this was one of those things where we all understood what the manual section said, but if one read it, you'd be like, well, do they do it? Do they not do it? Do they train on it? So for the recent history of this police department, 30 or 40 years, we have not used that control hold, the carotid control hold, because we haven't trained on it. So the section used to say, you can use it if you've trained on it. So since we didn't train on it, we didn't use it, but it was very vague. So that was a huge topic. And so what we did is said, in most circumstances, I'll just say it like this, the carotid control hold and the chokehold are banned, comma, unless the officer is in a situation where they are in a life or death and deadly force situation. So if they or someone else is going to be killed or have serious bodily injury, they may use it, but otherwise, it's banned. So that's, that's the bottom line on that. The next thing is a verbal warning before using deadly force. So our default is, yes, we want an officer to use, to give a verbal warning before they're going to use deadly force, if feasible. At some, sometimes it may not be feasible, or you may be able to articulate, the person knew I was a police officer, and they knew that I was going to use deadly force because of other reasons or other circumstances in the event. But the default is you will use, you will give a verbal warning before using deadly force. Same thing, kind of on this one, shooting at or from a moving vehicle. We really don't want you to do that. It's not, it's not, it doesn't work that well. We're not that great at even shooting things that are standing still. So a moving vehicle is not, it's not a safe thing to do. But if the officer is put in a position, or some other person is put in a position, and they have no other reasonable means of stopping an imminent threat of that vehicle, or if other deadly force is going to be used against them, they may shoot at or from a moving vehicle. But the default is, we don't want you doing that. That actually hasn't changed in the in the policy. It was never something. And you have to try to get out of the way. We want you to not, if you can move three steps to the right and not do it, move three steps to the right. Don't just stand your ground. That's not what we do. Administrative review of use of force. I was pretty, pretty happy to be able to tell the task force members and others, even city staff that were on these Zoom calls, of how far out ahead I think we are of that. So any use of force besides a simple control hold or a pain compliance technique is, is reported via our use of force analysis form. So a supervisor writes a synopsis of what happened, and who did what, why they did it, what type of force was used, and that that synopsis and that report goes And that synopsis and that report goes through that person's chain of command up to me. So each one I see and I read the report and I look and we all look to see, do we have a problem with, we don't seem to be trained well in this? Or Officer Bishop keeps using, you know, force, why is that when no one else is using this type of force? So it's training needs and also early intervention in case an officer is using force when he or she shouldn't be. But we are able to catch that early on and also use our body worn cameras to have the supervisor look at those instances and each instance of use of force and see, oh, that, that looks reasonable or that doesn't look reasonable, but we're in good shape on that. Let's see, one thing that was very, very important to the task force was as our community, they want to know how many times do you use force and what types of force are being used in our community. So we had put out a pamphlet, a document that said, hey, last year in 2019, we responded to over 49,000 calls for service. We used force 66 times. That's point 13%. I wish we hadn't used it 66. I wish we'd use it zero, but 66 is pretty good. But they want to know, okay, what type of force are you using and what is the frequency? So we pledged, and it's in the, in the document now, that each year we will, on our website or whatever other platform the public is into that year, we will post those on there so they can see how their police department is doing in use of force. And hopefully they'll be like, yep, that's good. Or if they have questions and they can contact us and say, you know, why is this happening and what are you doing about it? And that's fine with me. And then kind of talking about the body worn cameras, that was something that they were curious about. And luckily or fortuitously, in 2014, as a department, we decided that it was hugely important for us to have them because two things. One, I have no problem showing what people, people what we do. And if we're doing something wrong, then shame on us and we will own it and we will take care of it. But what I've found over the years, these six years, is that we are 99% of the time doing things pretty well. And if we're not, we will take care of it and we have taken care of it. So it's a great tool and we also figured everyone was filming us. So why not film ourselves and have our own, you know, show either we did well or we didn't. But I think we do well most of the time. I'm very proud of our officers. I think those are the main things in the, in the use of force task force that we had. It was, I was a little nervous at the beginning and I didn't know what to expect. And I was so wonderfully surprised by the engagement of the folks who volunteered and who the mayor got on the group and their thoughtfulness and they're just wanting to know why and how and, you know, when and things that we know because this is our profession, but others don't know. So it was great to, to listen and be part of that conversation. And I think come up with a really, a really good sound document moving forward. But one of the things that was really important is for them to understand the training that we do. So I wanted to throw it over to Lieutenant Leon and he can talk about how all the training that we do goes into addressing this specific policy. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. Thank you, Chief. I also want to thank the mayor. I want to thank the city council, city staff for providing me with this opportunity to speak about this very important subject, which is our training policy. I'm going to go ahead and start with our current training policy, which is Policy 300.8. Our current policy reads, officers will receive periodic training on this policy and demonstrate their knowledge and understanding. So that was the extent of our training policy. As you could see, it was very vague. It was very short. So I do appreciate all the time that the task force and the chief and everybody involved took in order to make some recommendations regarding our training policy. Our recommended training policy, some of the highlights of the changes that we are looking to make are to provide training to officers, investigators, supervisors on this policy a minimum of three times per year and demonstrate their knowledge and understanding. Another highlight is to provide guidelines regarding vulnerable populations, including but not limited to elderly persons, pregnant individuals and individuals with physical, mental and developmental disabilities. So those are some pretty important changes that we would like to, that we are recommending to our policy. And we here at the police department, we have been, you know, training on those specific guidelines. Although if you were to read our current policy, you would not know that. So making it clear to the public, making it clear to our employees and to anybody that reads this policy, they are going to see what our true intentions and goals are. And that is to provide the best level of training to our police officers to ensure that we go out there and make the right decisions when it comes to de-escalation, when it comes to use of force. And we want to make sure that we do that. We want to provide the best level of service to our, to the public and also keep our officers safe. Again, even though it wasn't listed in our training policy, we have been going far or beyond the minimum standards. So there is a commission of peace officer standards and training in California, which was established by the legislature in 1959 to set minimum selection and training standards for law enforcement. So just an example is the minimum requirement and mandated training for crisis intervention is a three hour course. I'm proud to say that for many years now, our police department provides over 50 hours of crisis intervention training to our police officers. Another example is it doesn't stop there. Once, once, you know, we periodically send our officers and our training staff to these trainings. And again, it's just a great example of the great work that our training staff does, our officers do. Nonetheless, again, I am thankful for this task force to make those recommended changes or come up with those recommended changes because it was vague and we didn't need to change it. Now those that read the policy will be able to know exactly what our goals and objectives are. And that, and again, that is to provide the best level of training to our officers and provide the best level of service to the public and treat them with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Lieutenant, thank you so much for your comments and certainly to the, to the chief. You know, I do want to take this opportunity to thank all that were involved in the committee to get us to this point. Certainly the staff members were outstanding, but also want to particularly thank those from the community that stepped up, seven members somewhat arbitrarily selected, but I think they did an outstanding job of helping us through this process. And I want to compliment them. They're in the, names are in the report and I hope to send out a personal note tomorrow to everyone. But certainly this evening, wish to thank everyone that was involved. The chief, I think, did an outstanding job, obviously a lot of support from members of the department and administrative staff here. But you know, this is a little bit of a trying issue, but I think that she, she was flexible. I think she was creative and I think she was responsive to some of the inquiries that the community had and we're better off as a result of it, I would, I would suggest. You know, this is a difficult issue and obviously it's been on the front page. And I must say, the reason I was interested in this review and thank everybody for being involved in making the suggestions that are now incorporated. But nevertheless, it was, it was a bit of a challenge and everyone stepped up in the department particularly to help us better understand as a community with the policies and also in endorsement of those if it's accepted this evening by, by the council. So you know, a job well done by everyone. Thank you for the patience and the understanding of the process that we went through to get to this point. And I'm glad for the comments that were made with regard to the process and the results. So thank you everyone for that. With that, open up other council members for comment.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I appreciate you. Yeah, thanks so much for appreciating the task force. And I also want to make sure that everyone knows we are very ably led by our facilitator Lorenzo Jones and was just hoping he could spend a few minutes just giving some of his perspectives on this as well.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Lorenzo, I'm sorry I didn't see you on the screen, but welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jim Schultz and the council. Good evening. Chief Bishop, I would first like to thank the mayor for introducing this topic to the city months ago and to Chief Bishop for allowing us to peek behind her curtains into the department. And so we had one task and one task only, and that was to review the city's policy as it relates to the Eight Can't Wait campaign. That was our singular task. And I would like to commend the task force, the community members, along with Chief Bishop and her staff and other city administrators for diving into this topic. It wasn't, as you can imagine, it wasn't an easy topic. It wasn't comfortable, but our job was to, to get underneath what was our policies. And I think we did a very effective job and I'd like to commend everyone for diving into the policies word for word, word for word, and to understand what the interpretations of those words meant as it relates to the community. And so our focus was to look at how was the policies going to impact the safety and the lives of the community as well as our police officers. And so we had many, many, many meetings, as you can imagine, where they're all cordial. Absolutely not. That was the, the whole point was to make it uncomfortable. But the end result is what you have. And I think everyone did a great job of collaborating and coming up with a policy to support the city, to support the police department, to support the community on how we are managing our efforts with relationships into the community. So I would like to thank all of you for diving into this specific topic. It's not just a city topic. It's a national conversation. And I would like to commend all of you for taking the lead on that. And again, big, big thank you to the task force, to the community members as well as the city administrators. And so thank you, Mayor, for giving us the opportunity to dive into it. Chief Bishop, thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to really dive into your particular department as it relates to this specific policy. So again, I thought we did a great job and congrats to everyone.
Lorenzo, I can't let us go on without thanking you. You were the focal point for a lot of discussion and the referee, if you will, in some, some cases and helped us through this process. We frankly wouldn't have made it, I think, without your expert guidance and thoughtfulness as we proceeded. So thank you so much for helping us get to this point. You were great.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, unless there are other comments, Jim, I only partial screen. I'd like to open up to council members for questions. We'll follow by public comment and then come back for further observations and emotion with regard to this item. So any questions or matters for clarification, starting with Vice Mayor Colin.
Thank you. And I want to echo all the thanks that was already given by the mayor to Lorenzo as well as the community members. It was a great process to be a part of and I think we have a great project, product that we are considering tonight. We did get an email actually from someone who actually had worked for the County of Marin in the mental health department. And they brought up something that in all our discussions actually hadn't come up. So, which is why I'm bringing it up tonight. And they were suggesting that in the definition section, which I know the chief went over the many, the top line changes, but the other part of the sections that changed was definitions. Our older policy didn't have the definitions flushed out. And they were wondering or suggesting if in those definitions, we could include, and I'm looking at my notes, aggravation of serious mental disorder. And this mental health professional was sharing that for some folks who have a mental disorder, that even just the interaction can aggravate, aggravate their condition. So I didn't know, I don't know if that email also made it to everybody else, but it seemed to me, it's as part of the definition, it's really just flushing out another population that which we already are aware and I know Chief, that you and your officers are aware. So I didn't, I, I, anyway, I wanted to bring that up to the group and get a sense of if that was something we'd want to incorporate.
Yeah, I think we did get that comment and I'd be interested in the chief's input at this point. Having said that, in fairness, this is somewhat of a new or a nuance, if you will, and I don't want to put you on the spot. And I can see as part of the procedure, if you wish, to, if we are at that point, we're not there yet. But if we get to the point of adoption of the principles and policies just outlined, we could refer this back to the city manager and the chief for refinement and incorporation of appropriate, rather than try to wordsmith it now. It's going to be a little difficult. Not to say we shouldn't change things. I'm just saying I don't want to put anybody on the spot at this, at this moment on something that's a little bit new to the topic, but Chief, it's your call.
Agreed.
I could make just a couple of real quick, I have some thoughts on it. I received, I did receive the email and my, my simplistic view of this is that we're looking, we're talking about a use of force policy and force means, you know, against a person's body. And the email we got was, you know, de-escalating conflict involving those who are mentally challenged. So we talked about that we de-escalate in every situation. And, and the wording that was, you know, asked to be used is an aggravation of a serious mental disorder and that it's from a welfare institutions code. I don't, you know, at a, at a call, I don't know how my officers dealing with someone is going to aggravate someone's serious mental condition. There's no way of, of quantifying that. I can tell if, if I hit someone in the arm and I leave a bruise, but I don't know just by the officer's mere presence or, or words to someone that they might know has a serious mental impairment. It's, I don't think it's appropriate in this, in this, in this policy section. It may be appropriate to look at in our crisis intervention, intervention incidents, which is a different section, 466, that does talk about what we do anyway in certain circumstances. So I don't think it fits well in here, but I appreciate the email and that this is something that certainly is an issue, but maybe not in this specific section.
Thank you, Chief. And I, you know, the policy better, you know, better than anybody here. And if there is a way to maybe enhance it in the appropriate place, just to kind of get at, to me, it was the underlying, in addition to everything else, we're going to be interacting, we, that's what I was, we, the officers can be interacting with these folks, but thank you for weighing in. Sorry, I didn't mean to spring it on you, but it was, it was interesting because it didn't come up in our, in any of our task force meetings. So I want to make sure that we discussed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members, questions or comments? I don't see any, so correct if I'm wrong.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Andrew, you were on screen. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, just a quick question too, and I think I'm addressing myself to the chief and to Lorenzo. But you know, any of the other members of the task force can certainly answer as well. Were there any community members of the task force who raised issues of substance or significance that were not addressed in the final document that we have before us? That is, that were relevant to this section on use of force and that either weren't considered or were set aside that we should know about?
Frankly, there are none to come to my mind, but, but let's be certain. Jim and then the chief?
Yeah, I can start us off. I'd love to, I'd love to actually get the impression of both Lorenzo and the chief on this. My impression is that everything that was discussed was incorporated in some way, as long as it related to use of force. There were a number of topics that the group wanted to talk about that went beyond the use of force policy. And I think there's going to be more opportunities in the coming months to do that. So I would answer the question, Councilmember McCullough, as no, everything that directly related to the use of force policy was dis- to the use of force policy was discussed and addressed in some way. But I don't mean that to say that we covered every issue as it relates to the police department, police services, or police policies. And I think that there's more conversation that could be had moving forward. Lorenzo?
Let me just amplify on that some, because we have had this discussion. Certainly a good question. Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. At least as I see this, and I think most of us, this is only phase one of at least two phases to fully comprehensively address this issue. Use of force, Eight Can't Wait, focusing on the current policies. Phase two, as I see it, will commence immediately upon approval of this. That will be to review many of our practices within the police department. I think the chief and I have had some discussions, and Jim, and others, certainly Kate as well, with regard to what the service we're now providing, how we're providing that, doing an excellent job. But maybe there are some circumstances where the police department is, it becomes the default for a response that may not be the most appropriate. I would suggest certain homeless issues, maybe, mental health issues, maybe, where we have someone that has a significant mental health issue in the downtown, and is acting out, let's say. Is it best to send someone with a badge and gun? And it may not be. So, therefore, phase two is going to address some of those services that we might redirect, not to, not to, you know, throw out the defund word, not to defund the department, but rather allocate the funding in a slightly different way. So collectively, we can address those, those issues more effectively. I don't want to put words in the chief's mouth, but I think that we are of the same mind with regard to some of the matters. I've said once, I've said before, if the person is in downtown, mentally challenged, as any of us could be, circumstances being what they are, but there's a person, if there's a person in downtown that's making, you know, gestures, or comments, and screaming, yelling, etc., we're not going to send the librarian, we're not going to send the public works, we're going to send the police. And is that the most appropriate? Maybe not. I think we need, as a community, to explore that. And again, it's not a slight in any way of our fine department, but rather, conventional thinking seems to, to me, anyway, so have shifted some, that those matters should be addressed differently. That'll be phase two, starting tomorrow. Good question, Don. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Chief, is there anything, or Lorenzo, anything that we discussed in the committee that wasn't acted upon in this, in this document?
No, I would say, very specifically, we looked at the specific use of force policies very specifically, and measured it against the Eight Can't Wait campaign. So, we were looking very, very specifically at those particular policies, and we scrubbed every single line. And so, I think the takeaway was, and we, Vice Mayor Kate, Colin and I had 101s with some of the task force members post the work. We gave them an opportunity to ask, was there anything else that we needed to look at, or did we address all of the needs as it related to the Eight Can't Wait campaign, and the particular work that we did. And in agreement, they all felt that everything that we brought up as concerns or issues, everything they brought up as areas of concerns and issues, was addressed in the revised policies. So, I think we, the task force did a very good job of very specifically tackling some of those issues as it related to those policies. And they all felt that the task force came away with the result that they, they were in agreement with.
I would like to, yeah, thank you, Lorenzo. I certainly agree. Not necessarily for council members, I think you know, but perhaps for those that are listening in, comment quickly on the task force, community members. This was an interesting process to some of us. I cooked up, and fingers crossed, quite frankly. But you may recall, we did have a demonstration that ended at City Hall. And there were, I don't know, some estimates, 2,000, or some such number. And at that point, I announced that we were going to be reviewing our policies. And also, at that same time, I asked for those that either lived or worked in San Rafael to raise their hand. And second, if they would be willing to participate in this review of policy procedures, from those hands remaining, in other words, those that live in San Rafael, and work in San Rafael, and/or work in San Rafael, select, I selected seven. I did so in that environment, simply because I wanted younger people, quite frankly, included in this process. I wanted more of minority included in this process. And I wanted those that are taking an active interest in the issue to be involved in the process. And from there, it was arbitrary. And I was struck by Lorenzo's comments when he contacted each of them, and came back to say that they were, he thought, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Lorenzo, excellent people. And my experience in the committee, they were outstanding. They were all very articulate, they had various viewpoints on matters that they didn't hesitate to express and discuss. And I thought it was a well-rounded discussion. So, it was a little bit different. But just so people know, it wasn't a stacked, you know, advisory committee, if you will. I thought it was pretty diverse, and I was very pleased with the outcome. With that, unless someone has a comment, let's turn to public comment, and ask City Clerk if there is any public comment on this issue.
If you are watching on YouTube, and you wish to provide public comments over the telephone, please call 669-900-9128, and use the meeting ID, which is 835-5946-7965. On YouTube, there is a banner right at the bottom of the video that does display that telephone number and meeting ID. Once you're on the phone, you can press star nine, and let us know that you wish to speak. And you'll hear a notification that you've been unmuted, and you'll have two minutes to provide your comments. If you're providing comments through YouTube in a live chat, please write "public comments" in caps prior to your comments, introduce yourself, and also note that there is a character limit on YouTube, so you will have to submit them in groups. If you did submit comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, such as the correspondence that was discussed in this, in this discussion, I have published those to the agenda packet on our public meetings page. So, if you are on the telephone, and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine, and submit your comments through YouTube now. We do have one caller. I'll go ahead and start our timer.
Thank you.
Do we have that person queued up?
Yeah, did someone just receive a notification that you've been unmuted? Your phone may be muted, so you'll want to select, you'll want to hit mute on your phone as well. Give me one second, it seems like.
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna keep working on those. I do have some public comments submitted over YouTube. The first is from Damian Ayobio. Thank you to the San Rafael leadership for opening the conversation and looking into the policies. This is a step in the right direction. And to reiterate, I am proud to see San Rafael leading Marin. There will be, there will be more to discuss, however, this specific task was about use of force. Next up will be practices, trainings, community outreach, trust. Thanks, thanks. Lucia Martel Dow, public comment. Members of the task force did ask about mental health and interaction with law enforcement, but we did not go into more detail since the focus was on use of force. And I'm gonna go back over to our callers. It seems like there seems to be a bit of an issue with mute. Did someone just receive a notification they've been unmuted? It does seem as like there's an issue. Can I have a bit of a pause and come back to comment? I'm getting some emails that there's some complications with YouTube and the Zoom. I need one moment, please. Sorry, Mayor and council. Give me one moment, please.
While we're waiting, Roy, nice report. Good job. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. I got a lot of help from others.
No doubt. It's a team effort.
It was, and I thank them for it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we do have Jonathan on the line. He's going to provide comments. Jonathan, you're welcome to go ahead and provide comments.
Okay, thank you very much. First thing is, it's because of the open and strong personality, Diana. If I knew this, this review of police interaction was gonna, of course, occur. And it's just, it's an example of how well the city is run. My only experience as a recipient of police action, from the Police Department of Kurgan Ralph Potter, was an absolute sweetie pie. Gave me a hug right out in the middle of a fourth street on a Thursday evening. And he imparted love and connection. So, I'm very much a staunch advocate of that kind of interaction with the police department. So, but the other thing I wanted to say is, another way to drive down that small percentage of the use of police force, even further, is to ensure that the city continues commitment to love and connection with teen youth, who are cited for the first time misdemeanor offenses. And until recently, there used to be a program called the Youth Services Bureau, that's funded by the city. But now, these instances are referred to three outlets, as I understand, three outlets, probation, general public schools, and the Marin Youth Court. And when the Bureau closed recently, I think it took down in the last year, the youth court not only saw its case load increase dramatically, but its demographic shifted from a Caucasian majority to a Latinx majority. The youth court is now a program of youth called Youth Transforming Justice. We've been released from our shackles from the San Francisco YMCA. And in this new era of reforming police action, I really think the city of San Rafael ought to allocate the funds it uses for the youth bureau by supporting community programs such as Youth Transforming Justice, to keep shackles from being placed on our young teens should they grow older and fall into situations where they would bring upon them such unfortunate forceful actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Chief made known, I'm certain. Any others?
There is one moment. Attempting to make contact with, it seems like there's some issues with unmuting. I'm not sure if it's on their end or our end, but I'm trying to make contacts through my phone. So, if you're calling in, and you're receiving a call on the other line, it's me. Mr. Mayor, it seems that I'm unable to unmute them, or they're not unmuted. I'm not sure what is happening.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
There are no other comments on YouTube, and that would conclude public comment.
Thank you. In that case, I shall close public comment, and back to council members for conclusions, and perhaps a motion with regard to acceptance of this report. Councilmember Bushy, thank you.
My conclusions are that I agree with everyone else who has offered thanks to the great team that Jim put together with Lorenzo, and the chief, who continues to be the bedrock of our response to our community and their need for protection. I'd just like to focus a little bit on Lieutenant Leon and training. I really appreciate the chief focusing on that in the presentation, because we can have all the most beautiful prose in the world on pages, but turning those words into action is what training does. And I really appreciate having this presentation, and seeing electronically, at least, eye to eye with the person who's going to be training the people that are going to be out on the streets. So, thank you very much, Lieutenant, for your presentation, and everyone for the, and all of their very hard work. And I look forward to supporting this motion when it is brought forward.
Sorry about that. Thanks for your comment. I happen to think, you're absolutely right. It strikes me that policies are fine, but the officers can't have a checklist out in the field. They have to be trained, so their reaction is appropriate and reflects the policies. And that training is essential, I think, for them to make the right, that is in accordance with the policy, right reaction. Because it's, at times, simply a reaction, but it's a conditioned reaction. And so, Mayor Beth, you're exactly right. Thanks for your comment. I think Roy would agree with that, but if not, let me know. Other comments? Councilmember McCullough?
I just want to echo the same thanks to all of the task force participants for the hard work that was put into this, and the sensitivity that they showed. You know, we got periodic feedback, and it was gratifying to learn that not only did we reach out to the community, and by way of this task force solicit input, so that we could make sure our use of force policies were up to date, and were reflective of our values within our community, but also that we caucused caucused with members of the department, that is, the rank and file, to ensure that as we consider changes to our existing policies or adding new policies, that, um, we brought them on board as well. And I, it's my understanding that we did that. And so we really made this a bilateral effort. And for that, I'm very grateful that we've come together with something that is better than what we had before and really reflective of what we are as a community and a department.
Good, good statement. Uh, John, I'm afraid you're not on my screen, but do you have a comment? You normally do.
Yeah, no, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, yeah, I, again, echo my fellow council members and all the hard work that everybody put into this task force. Um, I know it was not an easy task, but it was one that was needed and quite timely for, to get completed. And I hope this is really seen as the first step, um, there, as you mentioned, you know, a phase one, but also um, that this is an, an open, um, an open movement that as things change along the way, as we've seen they always can and do, um, that we're, we don't have to, you know, recreate the wheel and come back and adjust these things as necessary. So I really see this as a great opportunity for us as a city to, I, I, I don't know when the last time this, this was addressed in, in the policy. It might have been 10, 15, 20 years ago. It's, um, but this is something that might not need to be addressed every year, but I'm glad that we're working on this and everybody's come to the same conclusion that as things come up, we'll be ready to act on it quickly. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. You're prepped. That's perhaps a good, uh, good lead in, uh, that'll make fairly short, but nevertheless, wish to make. Um, assuming this is adopted tonight, and I think that's a fair assumption, so that I don't want to miss a beat with regard to Phase Two. Uh, Phase Two, as I just very briefly described, uh, really looks at the service the department is providing, and if it might be reconfigured in, in some ways. Uh, the, the chief, without putting words in her mouth, has been, uh, most creative and supportive of such a review to see if, uh, we can do things a little bit differently. I, I think that we can and frankly have for some time. Uh, so we will start that, uh, that process, that Phase Two, uh, tomorrow. And furthermore, uh, since I'm going to be, I think the process is going to take oh, months. Uh, this is not a short-term endeavor, but more than likely, uh, uh, months, I'll say plural, so I don't know how many that might be. Uh, since my, my term will be up in, uh, in November, uh, I think it would be most appropriate to have other members of our, our council oversee Phase Two. And I've asked Vice Mayor Collins if she would be involved in that, and I've asked uh, Councilmember John Gamblin if the two of them would now carry this, uh, carry this forward uh, to review the departments I mentioned that are, what I characterize as Phase Two. So, uh, I will be appointing the two of them, asking, if you will, uh, to take on this significant endeavor, obviously with the, uh, close, uh, close work of the chief and, and Jim, uh, and all others, uh, that have either been mentioned this evening or others. The, the committee itself that made reference to earlier, that was specific with regard to he can't wait. Uh, so he may, if, if the committee so decides, out of my hands at this point. Uh, but if the committee so decides, uh, they may select, uh, uh, new committee members, or may or may not, that's for their call, that may, uh, select, uh, additional community members to participate in the process. So, uh, with that, uh, are there any other comments? And if not, a motion of acceptance, the report would be appropriate. And furthermore, if you would mind reading the recommendation, because it has a second, uh, second phase to it.
Mayor Phillips, if I may hop in, I was able to make contact with one of the people who was trying to provide public comments, if it would be appropriate for them to provide.
How many do we have? I closed. Uh, please have that person address the council.
Thank you very much. My name is George Pegelow. I am the co-founder of the Marin County Youth Court and have also worked with youth at risk for 30 years in the county of Marin. Um, I appreciate the work that your group did. Um, I have a question, and that is, were there young people, high school students and or college students on this, uh, committee? And if not, I think in the future, they should definitely be included. I would also recommend that the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing that was created or done in the Obama administration and the report was published in 2015 should be used as a template to look at the entire scope of issues related to policing in communities. I think that until we have a broader context with more involvement of all the elements in our community, we're not going to be able to come up with, with, with good solutions to some of the challenges that the police face and that the community perceives. So I would appreciate it if, uh, I could have an opportunity perhaps to meet with, with Roy, who's a friend. I know him. I work at Terreloin High School with students and have met Roy many times and appreciate his good work. Uh, I think we can broaden the scope of our inquiry to move beyond just use of force, but how do police officers interact with the community? And how do they, how well do they understand the various elements of our community, including young people? Meaning high school, uh, and college. Um, so I would appreciate some opportunity to broaden the scope of our inquiry to include, uh, um, some of the issues that are very well-stressed in the 21st Century Task Force on, uh, policing, uh, that was done in 2015. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the council and to the distinguished members of the group that involved, were involved in this process. I appreciate it.
And, and thanks for your comment. We'll let Phase Two Committee, uh, uh, incorporate your thinking, uh, initially with regard to the first committee, uh, community members. Uh, I wasn't going to include the student body president of Terreloin High School and Centerfell High summer months. It was, it wasn't possible. But I think your suggestion has merit, and, and, uh, the, the second phase, I'm sure we'll take it in consideration. Lindsay, any others?
That concludes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, once again, we'll close, uh, public comment, come back for a motion with regard to this item.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion that we uh, accept this report and direct the chief of police to implement the recommended changes to the Police Department's use of force policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I matter carries five zero. Thanks again, everybody. Good job. Really good job. With that, we'll return to, and since the power's still on, although I thought mine might have gone out there for a moment, uh, we'll return to the agenda that's before us, uh, starting with the city manager's report and going on from there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna try to be extra brief because I'm also kind of watching the California ISO webpage and the PGE webpage to see what's happening with blackouts. Uh, but so far, so good in San Rafael. Um, regarding power outages, as you know, nearly half of Marin experienced a blackout on Friday uh, due to the high heat statewide and heavy electrical demand. I think everyone is now familiar maybe, uh, with, uh, some acronyms that they might not have known before. California Independent System Operator, or ISO, uh, making the determination of when, uh, where it capacity and when blackouts need to occur. I know the governor has expressed his displeasure with not having adequate notice, and I know that um, we felt the same way here in San Rafael of getting such short notice on, on outages. Um, I was on a call on Sunday night with the California OES, or Office of Emergency Services, and they released public information documents providing the current status, why they're taking place, why blackouts are taking place, and actions that residents can take. So we've been sending those out throughout the day, and will continue to do so as this goes on. Uh, the heat is, extreme heat is forecast to last through the middle of this week, um, through Thursday, driving electricity demand higher. So, uh, we are, we are getting better information, um, from California ISO and from PGE. Uh, we've been told that it's possible that San Rafael experiences outages tonight. We haven't seen any yet, according to their website. Uh, but we're continuing to monitor that. Uh, there are a number of things that people can do, and hopefully you've seen some of the messaging that went out today from the City of San Rafael or from PGE or others. Uh, just about trying to use electricity in off-peak hours, raising the thermostat, cooling homes during morning hours, and then setting the thermostat to 78 degrees for the rest of the day, uh, or higher than that, if possible, or when not at home. Um, using ceiling fans instead of air conditioners, uh, covering windows, avoid using the oven, limiting the opening of refrigerators, and cleaning clothes and dishes early, again, in off-peak hours. So there's more information at California ISO, or it's actually www.caiso.com um, on those informa-, um, for that type of information. The Cooling Center that, uh, opened at Marin Center Exhibit Hall at 10th Avenue with the flags on Saturday remains open uh, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM for older adults and those more vulnerable to heat-related illnesses. Um, and who cannot adequately stay cool at home. So that's going to continue. So, uh, it's not optimal yet in terms of having information or, um, managing the load in other ways so that we don't have to have these kind of runouts. Uh, but hopefully we'll, as soon as we get information, we'll be passing it along to our community. A few quick coronavirus or COVID-19 updates. I usually start off with the numbers, and I'm not going to do that tonight. Uh, the, the County Emergency Operations Center said today that they're still working on numbers. If you look at their surveillance page right now, it talks about the data issues at the state level and hoping to publish data at the, near the end of this week when we're confident in the numbers. Uh, so it's still, still there at coronavirus.marinhhs.org/surveillance. But, um, some of the recent numbers, as I'm sure everyone's aware, have been in question. So that's something that's being worked on right now to update those. Uh, probably the most significant thing we have going on is, um, regarding the Canal Neighborhood and an outbreak response plan. There is a new webpage that was put up on the site that I just mentioned, coronavirus.marinhhs.org. If you go there and click on outbreak management, it highlights the different actions that are going on from the County of Marin, the City of San Rafael, and other partners uh, in the canal. I'm not going to go through in this, the, um, amount of detail that I planned on, but just, um, you'll see there additional space where residents can quarantine or isolate as needed. Uh, additional testing that's taking place, communication and distribution of, uh, uh, face coverings, that sort of thing. Um, hiring additional contract tracers uh, to be reaching out to those so that, um, better information can take place. And again, that's County Health and Human Services, working with Canal Alliance, Marin Community Clinics, where the testing is now um, taking place, Marin Health, Kaiser, uh, City San Rafael, and, and others. Uh, real quick on that webpage, there's a number of action teams that have been put together regarding the outbreak, and I just wanted to give you the categories. It's around health education, testing, isolation, quarantine, communication, epidemiology, outreach, and partnerships. That's, for example, with business and commerce and engaging businesses to support activities. So those are the sorts of things going on, uh, right now in that neighborhood. The mayor and I participated in a call today with the County of Marin and Canal Alliance and others on how to continue and expand the focus, um, getting further beyond just kind of the day-to-day response levels and more into larger policy issues that, because as we know, that this is going to be a longer-term, uh, issue that we're dealing with. So, uh, more information on that to come as, as that evolves, but just so the council and community knows that that's a topic of conversation as well. Just a few other things very quickly. Uh, let's see, we are, we, we've got no good news at this point from any sort of federal assistance package. Um, now, there's some conversation going on about that, uh, but not much. We're still forecasting. We had a $9 million budget deficit going into this fiscal year, which the council took a number of actions to reduce that uh, down. Uh, but, uh, we still are showing a budget deficit and taking other actions through the course of this year uh, to, to balance our budget, which we're legally required to do. And we'll continue to work with the League of California Cities and the National League of Cities on federal assistance and trying to make that happen. Um, there are a couple of things quickly. We received a $20,000 grant through the Transportation of Marin, Transportation Authority of Marin to assist with the use of street parking for outdoor dining on Fourth Street. So we're starting with initial six locations that we're expecting to have up by the end of this month, and hopefully with more to follow. So you'll see, that's not just, uh, dining under the lights, but that's just ongoing, uh, use of outdoor space for, for outdoor dining. And lastly, uh, we've been working with the county and the Marin County Office of Education on the use of some of our public buildings, particularly community centers, to support distance learning for students that are not physically back at school but need access to a place to do their work and, um, connect to the internet, that sort of thing. So, uh, sorry for the rush. I, I want to make sure that we get through our full agenda tonight. Uh, but those are the highlights of things going on right now, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Try, let me try that again. Uh, thank, thank you, Jim. Excellent report, as, as usual. Uh, thanks for your, your guidance during this challenging period. Uh, now open, uh, for public expression. Anyone from the public wish to address us on items that are not on this evening's agenda? Uh, to bring matters to our attention, uh, offer some advice, recommendations, now would be an appropriate time.
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine. While I wait for participants to press star nine, I will also request the public comments be submitted on YouTube. Please note that when submitting comments on YouTube, you do need to write public comment prior to your message if you would like to have that read into the record. These are for topics not on this evening's agenda. I'm going to give it about 15 seconds. I see no callers interested in speaking. And there are no public comments through the YouTube chat.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent, uh, calendar items, of which there are three. One containing two parts. Uh, ask if any council members wish to have, uh, one or more of these items held. Seeing, uh, none, I'll ask for public comment with regard to consent items.
Once again, if you're participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comment on items on the consent calendar, please, please press star nine. If you're watching through YouTube, please write public comment and submit your comments now. I see no callers. And there are no public comments on YouTube.
In that case, we'll close public and come back for a, a single motion with regard to these three items. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Move in second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I matter carries five, uh, zero. We'll turn to the other agenda items. We've already addressed 5A. We'll turn to my 5B. Agreement granting to Centertown to LLC option. Uh, Jim, or maybe Ethan, I'm, I'm not sure who was up first, but whoever is, take, take the floor, please.
Um, I'll, I'll jump in real quick. Um, I'm just going to do a very quick, uh, little rundown, um, given the circumstances. Um, so before you, it's a resolution, uh, uh, to approve the authorization for the city manager to enter into, uh, an option to lease agreement for Centertown. Now, Centertown is at 855 C Street. It's about 60 units. And, uh, there's a lot of history to this project that we kind of outlined into the staff report. Mostly, it was initially a market rate project, um, that turned into an affordable housing project. But there's a lot of rehab that currently needs to be done on the project. Um, at the beginning of the year, Bridging EAH, who, um, have, currently are the acquire and manage the property, um, they're looking to do additional rehab and need to go to get bond financing in order to help fund that rehab. It's about $10 million. To do that, though, they need what's called an option to lease, um, to help go out and get that funding. So this is the first step of a several-step process. If they're able to get that funding, what they would do is trigger an option to lease, and then we'd come back as staff to start working on an additional ground lease. So the current project, Bridging EAH leased the property from the city who owns the property. None of that would change under, um, the option to lease or an additional ground lease. It's just us going back in and doing a new negotiation for the property itself. It's much needed rehab. It's about $10 million, and it really is intended to kind of help maintain our existing stock of affordable housing. So with that, very quickly, um, there is a few options, uh, for city council. The first would be to adopt that resolution, which would be approving and authorizing the city manager to execute that option to lease. You could adopt-
authorizing the city manager to execute that option to lease. You could adopt the resolution with modifications, direct staff to return with more information, or take no action. And I'm happy to answer questions, and we also have a representative from Bridge on the line, as well as Libby Seifel, who helped with the due diligence for the project itself.
Thank you, Ethan, and I'll just add that this has gone through the Finance Committee, and I think it's fair to characterize it as favorable, unless John has a different thought on that, but it did go through Finance, okay. Any question from council members? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for public comment.
Hi. If you are participating by telephone and you wish to, to speak, please press star nine. While I wait for participants to press star nine, I'm also going to request that public comments be submitted through YouTube. Please note that when submitting comments through YouTube, you do need to write public comment in advance of your message, and also introduce yourself, so we know who you are. We're going to go ahead and give this another try. Zoom does seem to be acting up, so I will try to contact the telephone numbers if I'm unable to reach you, but we'll go ahead and give this another try. And then please make sure you're unmuted as well on your line, if you're a caller with the telephone number ending 16. And I'm also going to provide another opportunity, if you're a caller and this isn't working for you on Zoom, if you want to call my direct line at 415-485-3066. And I'll try unmuting. I'm calling one of the callers now.
Thank you.
Council, this is Sarah. Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide a comment. My name is Sarah White. I'm a director with Bridge Housing. I've been working in partnership with EAH on a plan to resyndicate Centertown, and just want to say thank you for all the time and effort you've put into evaluating our requests. We really appreciate that. Happy to hear what sounds, or sounds as though things may be moving forward. Very grateful for that. And I just want to acknowledge, it's been such a pleasure working with Ethan. He has been great to work with, and then, you know, the city's consultant, Libby Seifel, has done a fantastic job of, you know, summarizing the transaction and trying to make what is a pretty complicated project, financing structure, easy to understand, so people felt informed around the decision-making process. Or at least, I hope, I hope that's how you all felt. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We have one more caller I'm going to try to reach out to right now. But the last, if you're, have a telephone number with the last numbers of 16, I'm calling you on the other line. There are no public comments through YouTube, and that caller did just get dropped. And that conclude, conclude public comment.
Okay, thank you. I was just distracted by a note from PG&E. It looks like we're going to make it through this evening's meeting. Coming back, closing public and coming back to council for questions, starting with Councilmember McCullough.
Actually, I don't have a question. I was prepared to make a motion, but I did want to acknowledge the fact that after the discussion we had, I think it was in closed session last time, I appreciate the modifications that were made to the option agreement. The specific concern I had that the option period was too long, that's been addressed. And with that, I'd be happy to make a motion, unless others wish to talk.
Please do.
Then I move that we adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute the attached option to lease agreement, which grants Centertown an option to lease the city-owned property at 855 C Street.
Thank you again, comment, thanks for your comments. Close. Is there a second regarding the motion? Councilmember Gamblin?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I, who cares? Councilmember Gallin, second, roll call, please.
House Member Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
House Member Gamblin.
Aye.
House Member McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries five zero. Thanks, Ethan. Good job on this. Not an easy matter. Now, move on to council members' reports. Anyone? Let's see, Councilmember McCullough, perhaps?
You know, I should have muted myself. I don't have any comment at this time. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? I'll just comment on a couple of quick things. First, today, we filed for the sales tax measure that the council adopted. It will be on the ballot in March, I mean, March, November 3rd. It was signed by Natu, Patty Garberino, Chief Gray, Amy Likeover, and myself. There may be a rebuttal, in which case, that too will be responded to. We are talking with, on that matter, talking with, we being Jim and myself, and, I don't know, John, are you involved in that? I'm sorry, I guess I don't know. A meeting tomorrow at noon with the chamber?
Yes, I'm on that as well.
Good, good. Okay, I thought so, but I wasn't sure. Three SROs, you may have noticed there was an issue in the paper about SROs. I, I kind of suspected that for some time. I did have a discussion prior to my meeting with the paper about SROs, and of course, it's not our decision. We provide one of the officers, and another is funded through a tobacco grant. They, will be the schools board's decision, and I understand that they are going to hear the matter on the 24th, and perhaps delay the decision until their next meeting, but that's coming up, if you're interested. For, just in passing, I had lunch with former Mayor Larry Moriah at his invitation today, and he said, to say hi to everybody. And finally, I am going to be heading to Kentucky the after tomorrow. I'll be gone for about two and a half weeks, so don't screw things up while I'm gone. That's all I got to say. I'm sure you won't. With that, that's the end of our successor agency, and therefore, we shall be adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good job.
Thanks, everyone.
Night.
Good night, everybody. Good to see you.
Rob, I didn't get, I didn't have a closed session, so we didn't get to you tonight.